We're on, we're on, we're on the, on air, so to speak?
I'm on air.
Okay. This is the regularly scheduled Town of Nantucket Board of Appeals meeting Thursday, June 8th, 2017. So, can I get an approval of the agenda as written?
Still moved.
Okay. Anyone want to second that?
I'll second this.
Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. What about the minutes of May 11th, 2017? I read them. Seemed okay today.
You made the motion?
I'll second that.
Chairman made a motion to approve as written. Lisa seconded. Any further discussion? No. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Okay. All business. Fifty-one, oh-three. Rugged Scott LLC, Rugged Scott, AKA Beach Plum 40B, for the applicant. Let's let Lisa get her phone. I'm kidding. Go ahead.
Good afternoon. Josh Posner for Rugged Scott LLC. We're here today to give a, an overview of the project and a status report on where things stand, as well as to request approval of two specific modifications. I had the opportunity to read Eleanor's staff memo, which went out in the package. And so I think what I'll do is just go through the overview relatively, you know, in a summary fashion, and then talk about the two specific items, and obviously, at any point, I'm happy to answer any questions. We have a slideshow. Unfortunately, we had a little misunderstanding about what was necessary technologically in order to show it to you. And so, at the moment, it may work and it may not, and I don't know whether we should launch into it and hope for the best, or whether we should kind of operate as if we don't have it. There's one picture up there, but there's quite a few others in the slideshow. Maybe what I'll do, under these circumstances, is talk for a few minutes just about the overview, and then we'll see how the slideshow works, and if it doesn't work, we'll just have to bail on the slideshow.
Okay.
And then we'll go to the specifics. So, I'll hold this so that Lisa can see it. The audience, I guess, will be able to see it too well.
Josh, can you speak into the microphone? I need help.
Yeah, thanks, Jamie. Okay. So, Beach Plum Village is a forty-unit development. Ten units are affordable, thirty are market rate. Work began in 2007, had to stop for a while during the Great Recession, and took a while to get started again. We're very excited about where things are at now. We've had a very successful year building ten additional houses. And as the memo that you've got states, at this point, or within the next few weeks, we will have completed twenty-six homes. Twenty-five now have certificates of occupancy. One more is expected tomorrow. We will have two more homes where the exterior is completed, and the landscaping is in, so for the summer, it'll look like a completed home. But we stopped work in the summer in order to respect the summer quiet and enjoyment for the people who are living in the, in the community. And that will leave twelve more homes to be built. Of the twenty-six, nineteen are market rate and seven are affordable. Six of those affordables are now sold and occupied, and the seventh one is the one that gets its certificate of occupancy hopefully tomorrow, and the seventh affordable owner will move in probably next week. That will leave three additional affordable homes to be built and nine market rate homes to be built. We've clustered the development so that most of it is built here. The, and so the places that haven't been built are clustered down here. There are two homes here that haven't been built, but if you go out there, or if our slideshow works, you'll be able to see that it's coming together very nicely. Just to hit some of the non-housing related elements, the community has a tennis court, a pool, a fitness center slash clubhouse, a park in the middle with a playground, and hopefully, if we are successful today, a gazebo, which has gone through the HDC. And so there's a lot of extra amenities besides beautiful homes and a great streetscape. I think there's a report that was in the package from Ed Pesci, who has been out to inspect the infrastructure, and basically, we're done with the infrastructure as soon as the pool is finished and the gazebo is built and the park is finished, which will be happening over the next couple of weeks. Why don't I take a try at the slideshow, and then we'll get into the specifics. I'm afraid I'm not going to be able to do the slideshow from the microphone.
That's okay.
If I can do it at all. Now, this has been kind of fragile, and so we're somewhere in the middle of the slideshow. This happens to be one of our affordable units at the corner of one of the main roads, Blazing Star Road and Thistle Way, which is a secondary shell road. Maybe Jamie can show kind of where that actually is on the site. Good. Most of our homes look a lot like this, and each lot is a little different shape, and it's all kind of put together as kind of a jigsaw puzzle in order to be as Nantuckety as possible in terms of the development. Let's see what happens when I try to move. Yeah, that's kind of what happens sometimes. Let's see whether any of them get larger. So this is a market rate home that was finished. I'm just going to give you sort of a walk through the neighborhood. This is a playground, a little climbing structure within our park. This is a view kind of near where you enter at the circle. On the right, just that corner, is our fitness room, our fitness center and clubhouse. On the left is, I think, a good typical streetscape. One of the homes that's recently finished. A bunch of small ones that mysteriously were built and why they're not bigger. This is an area that hasn't been developed yet, and it is separated off from the rest of the neighborhood for the summer with a screened fence. We, these actually are the three, if you think back a couple of meetings ago, you released four lots, four additional lots, which we wanted to do foundations on, and build those foundations, we hope will be going in over the next, some of the foundation will be going in shortly. We expect to get the building permits for three homes in this area soon, and those will be built out next year. Apologies for this technical difficulties. There's a home that is, this was done about a week ago. At this point, this is mostly roofed and shingled, and by the end of June, will be completed, and the landscaping around it will be done, and it'll look as nice as the other ones that are finished. This is one of the older homes in the community that was built. Our first ones were built almost ten years ago at this point, so this is in that first batch. Another view with an angle into the neighborhood. One of the older ones on the left, and one that was completed just last year, straight ahead. We had a swimming pool. It was not quite big enough, and it was not something that we were as proud of as we wanted to be, and so we changed the swimming pool. This point, it's filled, and the patio around it is nearing completion, and this will be ready, and people will be swimming in it a week from tomorrow. And something just died here. Looks great on the laptop. I actually think it survived better than I was here, so maybe we, well, okay, we'll do a few more and see what happens. We're getting kind of the basic feel of what I was hoping to accomplish anyways, so. There's another view down one of our secondary streets. Some of the homes have garages, some don't. All different kinds of setups. Okay. Well, maybe.
I think we get a sec.
Rather than struggle strongly here, I think you got the basic, there you go.
I think we get a sec.
Let's just end on this one.
Go ahead.
So, this is our, kind of our main entry down Woodlily. Straight ahead is the fitness center, clubhouse. This is the north, eastern kind of portion of the development, and this is almost complete at this point. There are two vacant lots here, and we've now moved about to about three quarters of the development being built out.
Okay. Thank you.
So, that's the, that's the slideshow.
What we did see looks pretty good.
Yeah, thanks.
At least, I think so. I had some questions, just on the overall, unless anybody else has anything they want to ask, or, or if we can sort of tick through the list of the, you know, the issues we're here today to discuss are the gazebo and whether or not we are okay with switching the one three-bedroom to a four-bedroom. But in reviewing, just taking an opportunity, since you were coming in, to look at the comprehensive permit and whatnot, I do have a couple of other sort of broader questions, and it's perfect you're here.
Sure.
One is, are you complying with all the conditions that we were regarding donating, not donating, but allocating certain monies to things like, I think there was a traffic, I'm not exactly sure what it was, and a bike path.
Yeah.
Issue. Have those monies been paid in and?
Yes.
Yes?
All of that stuff is, is finished. I made a list in that email.
Okay.
Of the, of the infrastructure items. We can tick, tick right down them if you'd like. I'd be happy to do that.
I'm happy with you saying you've done it, and we'll double check it.
There were quite a few things.
Right.
We had to extend a sewer line.
Right.
Which we did ten years ago. We built a bus station. We built, we paved rugged road distance. We paved most, we paved, paved everything that's been paved on Scott's Way. Good bike path on Scott's Way.
I did see that your list is, now that you're reminding me, I just, so we'll.
Those are all done.
All done. So we'll just double check that, but I believe you. Is the local preference situation working out pretty well? Yes?
Yeah, I mean, there's a, there was a, an arrangement that we had that, that reserved seven of the ten units for Nantucket preference, and then, of course, Nantucketers are able to apply for all of them. And at this point, all of the people who are in the affordable units are Nantucketers.
Okay.
The state law requires that it be open beyond just the town for at least some of the units.
In terms of the lottery?
In terms of the lottery.
Did you get applicants from elsewhere?
I don't even think we got any applicants from elsewhere.
Just curious, because you had to do a new lottery relative, about a year ago, for obvious reasons.
I don't believe we got any from off-island.
Okay. Alrighty.
I can check into that if you want, but I don't.
I'd just be curious. In terms of the homeowners association fees, are they fixed at a number, or when you're, for instance, it did occur to me, when you're increasing the amenities, which is a plus, obviously, bigger pool, it takes maintenance, there are expenses, and it's not so much for the market rate units, but for the affordable units, do their homeowner or association fees basically stay constant?
No, they, they do change, but we, we created a formula from the outset, which is actually a little unusual for 40B projects. We've got a number of unusual aspects because it's Nantucket. What we did was we, we assigned beneficial interest, if you will, to each home, to each lot, based on the expected market value at the time we put the whole development together. And so, as a practical matter, affordable homes pay about twenty percent the common charge that the market rate homes pay. And so, an average.
Twenty percent, twenty percent per unit?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, so, in other words, a typical affordable home is paying seven or eight hundred dollars a year, and a typical market rate home now is paying about four thousand dollars a year. And, you know, of course, the access is the same, and so, access to the pool and the fitness center, and then, of course, all the maintenance of the grounds and park and things like that. So they do go up, because the budget goes up, and that beneficial interest then gets applied to the total that's needed, but it's heavily subsidized.
The, the affordable units, of course, are, any upside is capped for them. If the market rate units escalated some wonderful rate, is that all taken into account? Do you reassess every few years, every year, or?
No.
No.
For the, for the common charge assessment?
Yeah.
No.
No.
That was set based on a projection early on, and so basically, each lot has a beneficial interest percentage assigned to it.
Okay.
And it pays that percentage of the total budget, regardless of whether it's sold for a lot or a little.
Got it. In essence, once things are, are complete, and, and the amenities are complete, there's no way that they're going to be, they're going to be increased, per se. I mean, it'll go up incrementally with the cost of doing business out here, but it's not like you're going, you have the opportunity to build a second gym, for instance, correct?
Yeah. I mean, I think that, as a practical matter, I think that's absolutely right. As a technical matter, the, the development gets turned over from me as the developer to the homeowners association when the last unit is sold. Until then, I act as the decider for the homeowners association, and I'm, you know, held accountable for that. So, ten years from now, if the homeowners association got together and decided that it wanted to tear down the pool and make an even nicer pool, or tear down this and do something else, there would be a process through which they could go through a decision-making on that and assess each other. They would, they would be locked in to that assessment percentage that's skewed away from the affordables.
Well, and not to mention, they would have to come back here.
They would have to come back to the HDC.
You know, I'm a little confused by that whole HDC thing. I thought the intent's or.
Well, no, actually, I'm sorry, sorry, take that back. If there was going to be a change in the program, it would have to come back.
Right. If, if, if you were changing a window, you go to the HDC.
Correct.
If you're changing, if, as you said, you wanted to put a bigger pool in, you know, just for sake of argument, you would have, not you, the homeowners association would have to come back, correct? That's my understanding. They would have to go to the HDC as well.
Yeah.
But the HDC does not become the, and the language that I've been reading is a little confusing. I mean, the HDC, the intent, I think, was that we, the ZBA, didn't have interest in continuing to act as the HDC, but we certainly were not ceding oversight of anything other than the appearance of a building or the gazebo.
All of the regulatory rights that exist now, that the zoning board has, continues to have.
Right. All right. Well, then I get to a couple other items that I'm having a little trouble with, and I just need some clarification. You sold one of the lots to Mr. Feely, correct?
Correct.
I'm certainly not aware, nor was Ed Marchand, of that being okay in a 40B, primarily with regard to cost certification. How, how does that work? And, go ahead.
I think that we're, I don't know, I'd be happy to talk to Ed about, about that. We, we're not trying to do anything that isn't allowed. We are trying to make it as nice a community as we can, and it's to the advantage of everybody in the community to have strong property values. I've been anxious to get the development as far as we can get it. You know, we've been at this now for ten-plus years, and there may be something that needs to be done in terms of incorporating more, more into the cost certification than simply the sale of the lot. I don't know. That's actually a good question.
Well, I mean, I mean, the reason I bring it up is, and I'm not saying this is happening, by the way, but it, it does give the appearance that if I, as a developer, wanted to sell a lot to somebody and to, and then somehow maybe, or maybe, or maybe not sharing in the profits, there's an agreement where your profits as the developer are capped.
Right.
And anything over that, the town shares in.
Correct.
Well, all of a sudden, it looks like, ooh, what's going on? I'm not sure you can do it. So, I think at a minimum, you're going to have to get some sort of, first of all, it probably should have come here, because it's a, it's a major change to the comprehensive permit, and maybe it still has to, and, or I think you need to get a letter from the subsidizing agent, see that states that it's okay, because again, there, certainly, if this was, if, if your intent was this was only the first time that you might do this, that, that, I think, is a big sticking point, and needs to be worked out.
I will, I will look into that. You know, I, I was totally under the belief that what we were doing was allowed, but if there's something that we need to do to bring that more in line, we will do it.
Well, I, I'm just curious, what led you to believe that it was okay? Did you get advice to that extent, or you just thought it would be okay?
Yeah, I did. I mean, you know, we couldn't, yeah.
Okay. It's, it's, that's a big question, because again, the cost certification sort of goes out the window. I mean, Mr. Feely can go out and do whatever he wants to do, and it's not, it's no longer part of. You could have, and again, I'm not saying this, I have no idea, you could have sold him that lot at a, a reduced price, which, blah, 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 I mean, you get the implication.
Yeah. I think that what we did was allowed, but it may, it is, it is not the way everything else has been done in that development. And I take your point about the cost certification. We have had extraordinary expenses in doing this development, and it would be wonderful if we were in the, got to the point where we were coming anywhere near the profit cap. I'm trying to keep this from being something that, you know, is not a financial success, so I'm not worried about whatever we would need to do to make this consistent with all of the regulations and the whole cost certification thing.
Okay. You know, again, it's, it's, does anybody else have an issue with, with this, or is anybody else aware of it?
I wasn't aware of it.
I didn't sit on this, this application. Was it twelve years ago?
Two thousand and six it was settled. It was decided in two thousand and five.
But it's an interesting point.
Well, any 40B basically has to be cost certified at the end, because there are statutory limitations in terms of, of the profit, which you're aware of.
Yeah.
And in this particular case, and in many of the ones that we've, the other ones that we sat on, Avon's Quarry, there was also a sharing arrangement that anything over, I don't remember the exact number, I think in your case, it's anything over fifteen percent.
Right.
Is split maybe, and then anything over twenty.
Split up at fifteen, and then after twenty, it goes to the town.
And I'm not in, I'm not parsing the dollars and thinking that there's going to be some windfall. I'm saying I don't, it, it doesn't, you know, there's some, there's some issue with it that needs to be clarified. And again, I think probably a, a letter from the subsidizing agent, who ultimately, I believe, is in charge of cost certification, or at least is involved.
Is it just the one lot?
It's just the one lot. We, we have actually thought about potentially doing a second lot that way. The reason, by the way, is for the enhancement and improvement of the development. As I think most of you know, small town, I mean, Jamie has done a number of homes on spec. He has a little bit of a brand, and it's something that would be, I think, a, a plus for making Beach Plum Village into something that was an even better community.
But didn't Jamie also build the other houses in the development?
Jamie is my, is the contractor for, you know, since we started up again.
Right.
Didn't start.
Again, the implication, or the potential for somebody thinking something's going on, you know, is there, so.
There's going to be a cost certification, Mr. Chairman, as you say, and, you know, let's just go right through the whole thing.
I think it would be best practices to get a letter or something saying that what we've done is.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, there's, there's, I think, you have to protect the community against bad perception. That's probably what we're talking about. So I think that at the very least, you know, there's got to be some appraisals, you know, that were done prior to this transaction. And, you know, if everything's on an arm-length basis, I don't think we have a problem with it.
Well, the problem I have with it is, is again, just from more of a procedural issue, it, it's definitely a departure, and there was no mention, certainly in the comprehensive permit, of selling lots alone to anybody, whether it's Mr. Feely or, or Mr. Tool. Doesn't matter. There was no, that was not contemplated, and therefore arguably not allowed. So it should, at a minimum, come back and be blessed with ideally some, again, letter from the subsidizing agent, some, somebody saying that it's kosher, because it doesn't seem it. And I would.
I'd be happy to do some work on this and prepare something and come and explain and answer. and answer whatever questions after we're more prepared. I didn't realize that this was something that, you know, was a question. And now that you've raised it, I look forward to trying to respond more comprehensively.
Yeah, that's fine.
The home that was built on that lot is consistent with the plan. So it's not, and we've also had some homes, maybe just getting myself into some other issues here, but we've had some situations where we build the home and sell it when it's completed. Most of them are like that. We've had others where we, where we sell the lot and have a contract with the buyer to build the home. And so the home is being paid for as it's constructed, and the lot is being paid for upfront. How this relates to that, it's the same program, it's the same house. But I hear what you're saying, and the cost certification issue, I think, is a legitimate one. And I think it can be addressed, and we'll be happy to do it.
I think that, that selling a lot and building was contemplated in the decision. What's unusual about this is he's selling the lot to a third party who he happened to have a business relationship with. So, but I don't think there's anything wrong with selling the lot and having the developer build the house.
Well, I disagree with you on the, on the whole cost certification issue. Because again, the, if it's in the comprehensive permit that that was allowed, so be it. I don't, I don't remember reading that you could, could sell a lot with a contract to build. Because again, the contract to build, there is the potential for the perception to be, they sold the lot for very little. All the profit is back-end loaded in the, in the house construction, and we're in.
This is on a market rate.
This is on a market, it's all market rate we're talking. And they happen to have, in this particular case, a business relationship. So how do we cost certify?
Well, that, that's the question. But when, when the developer builds the house on top of the lot he just sold, a buyer, I think that the acquisition cost of the lot and the building cost, where there's a contract that can be, you know, in place, that, that's an arms-length transaction as far as I'm concerned, inside of the decision.
Well, but the developer didn't build the house. The contract, I assume, was not with the developer, but with Mr. Feely, his company Cottage and Castle.
In this one it is, but in the other ones, we're the contractor.
Okay.
Although I have a secondary contract with Cottage and Castle to actually do the construction. But the funds flow through our entity.
Okay, well, that's a different issue. Yeah.
I think we can do something to make sure that all of the costs relating to the one we're talking about now are captured in the, are auditable and are captured within the comprehensive permit.
Yeah, that's fine. I think we just need to, you know, again, I didn't mean to sandbag you here, and I didn't expect a, you know, a definitive answer.
Yeah, that's fine. No, that's totally fine.
Interesting point to bring up. You sat on the decision.
No, I did not.
You didn't?
No.
Is anyone left?
Karen, maybe? Oh, I don't remember, but I did not. Okay, so that's a big issue that needs to be cleared up. I mean, again, the other issue, not just cost certification, but the fact that, in my opinion, you should have come back. If you wanted to do this, sell the lot, you had to come here. It didn't happen, and now you really should retroactively come with proof from the subsidizing agent that this is all kosher, and that's what you want to do. So just give that some.
Happy to look into it, Mr. Chairman. The reason we did it was we did not believe we had to come for permission. And so I apologize if that's, you know, something that turns out to be the case, but.
Okay. All right. Did you want to say something, Jamie?
I would love to say something. So I just want to look you guys all in the eye and say, there is nothing that's not kosher about this transaction here. I mean, the history of this goes back to, I've been asking Josh for years for suggesting that the park could be improved, and that there's things to this development that, that, that in the long term would be better for him. And he made the decision last year to, to make those improvements. And at that time, I said, if you're going to go forward with these improvements, I would love to buy a lot in here. And so we went through what, in my opinion, was a very analytical pricing process for that lot, which I'm 100% comfortable with. And that, at the end, when it goes through this certification process, it will be, you know, picked up in the audit, and I'm sure that there won't be an adjustment. But maybe there is. But I don't anticipate it because I think the analytical process in which we used to get to my purchase price was fair market. So I'm just reacting to what you're saying and telling you that I'm very comfortable with the situation. I didn't realize that there could be any conflict here. I've been in front of you guys before for the jacuzzi that we put into this lot as the homeowner of this lot. So this isn't the first time you guys are hearing about that lot sale. And I don't know when that was, maybe six months ago, close to when I did the purchase. So, but happy to obviously cooperate and.
Yeah, again, I'm.
Sounds like it'll all get worked out.
From what Josh says, there's not some pot of gold at the end that the town is going to be splitting. But, but as Michael said, it's much more, we're here to protect the interests of the town and the perception of protecting the interests of the town. And so that's what I'm trying to do. So again, I'm not questioning anybody's honesty or intent. But I think it needs to be cleaned up, cleared up.
We will do that.
And I just wanted to go on the record as a cross-foster.
Yeah, no worries. Thank you. Okay, so in, the other thing that came to light when I was reviewing this, again, just taking an opportunity to look at it since you were coming in, there, there is a, a change to a lot and its easement on that lot that was, I don't, unless I'm looking incorrectly at the documents, was not there at the beginning. And therefore, I don't think you can do that either without coming back here. And with the lot I'm speaking of, it's Lot 27. When I look at the, you know, original plan that was attached, there is no easement. They, I think, believe have an easement over Blue, I believe, Part of 28 to get from Blue Flag to their lot. Now, when it was sold, I think just recently, the driveway easement has shifted, and there's an easement that goes to the benefit of 28 that basically takes 976 square feet of Lot 27, doesn't give it to 28, but gives them the right to use it and to build a garage. That was never contemplated, that I read in the comprehensive permit. So how did that come about?
That lot, when it was originally laid out, had a different house on it. It had a house that we swapped with Lot 24, I believe. We did that a couple of years ago because we were trying to accommodate. One of the people who had won the lottery originally in 2007, and who was qualified for a four-bedroom unit, but we needed to, anyways, we swapped the house that was originally on Lot 27 onto 24, and the house that was on 24 over to 27. When the new house was put on 27th, there was room for a garage. We don't do garages for affordable homes. The garages are how we sell and part some of the market rate homes. And so it seemed like a reasonable way of fitting a garage onto the lot, which is allowed and is done in many cases throughout Beach Plum, and is allowed in the decision, as I understand it.
I believe it was allowed on three, it was allowed on some lots, certain lots. They were all specified.
I think there's about 50.
No, three, I was going to say three affordable units.
Didn't these guys come to us and ask to switch that garage around?
No. House, the house type.
Something that they came to us and heard in the garage as well.
Not that I recall.
The models were swapped between Lot 24 and Lot 27, and the garage issue was not discussed.
Again, if nothing else, this is, this could be construed as a substantial change or insubstantial. But it should, changing an easement on a piece of property that, you know, was not part of the original plan, to the detriment of an affordable unit and the benefit of a market rate unit, that definitely should have come here, so that, before it happened. And it didn't. So I have a problem with that, and that needs to be cleared up. And rather than, I guess, discuss it in detail now, I think you need to come back for that and get it blessed, or not.
Okay.
Again, I guess, did you, did this increase the gross number of garages? Or did you swap? In other words, did Lot 24 originally have a garage on it in plan?
I don't know. I know that there are garages approved on certain lots that we didn't build. So we are not at the maximum number of garages. And I know that because of the swap, this new configuration allowed enough land for a garage. We have not gotten that garage approved by the zoning board yet. And we would be, we know we have to come back. Well, I'm not sure we have to come back to the board, but we have to get approval from the zoning board, from the zoning, to do a garage. I think that the decision actually allows for garages as long as they meet certain criteria.
No, they were, the lots, I don't have it in.
Most of them are laid out and are shown on the site plan, and there was not a lot, there was not a garage on this lot, on this site plan.
Go ahead.
The lot was originally contemplated for Lot 24. It's shown on a plan that was part of one of the technical amendments and clarifications, where they came back to the board, I believe, in 2008. And to clarify setbacks, each page corresponds to each lot, and the model footprint is shown along with the garage. So I went through that at length and in detail, and the garage was contemplated for Lot 24. As Josh says, with the model swap, apparently there's some issue with the footprint on Lot 24 not allowing a garage, whereas I suppose it's, dutifully does on Lot 27.
Well, it definitely doesn't. I mean, you do not, it wasn't a, it wasn't a free pass to swap the location. They were specified as to exact lots. I don't have the list in front of me. Fortunately, I left my iPad at home, but there was a specific list. This lot was not on the list. And now, not only is it potentially getting a garage put on it, it's, you know, 976 square feet of the lot has been easemented away. So again, that, I'm not going to make a determination or whether it's substantial or insubstantial, but it definitely should have, it's the same with the, the sale of the lot. It should have come here, and before you did it. And it didn't. So again, at a minimum, I think you need to come here and get that either blessed or not. How's everyone else feel about that?
Can you show us the plan, which lot it is on the?
This is the original.
Now.
So that was an easement to get to a garage on the back lot, or the?
Well, the original easement allowed to get to the back of.
Of the other lot.
Of the bigger, of 27.
The lot that's on that plan that Mike has in his right hand.
Yes. That was from, over, 28 goes to.
So even though there's a garage drawn on that other plan that shows the easement, that garage in the easement wasn't built, and it's just access to get to the other garage.
That lot just sold. It's an affordable unit, 27.
Okay.
And.
Which one is that?
This actually is.
Oh, that's old.
Old and, it's new in some ways, but it's not accurate in terms of the footprint of the house that's now on 24. It's actually still got the old footprint from what it used to be.
Can you just point out the lot for me, though? The pink one? No.
The green one here, it's affordable. This is a market rate home that has a garage that's kind of half on, not half off, on this particular plan.
Okay.
Well, it doesn't have a garage yet.
No, there's no garage there now.
But that's, okay.
And the easement wasn't there in the beginning. That, that's the issue.
The easement was not there.
I mean, you cannot, in my opinion, make these kind of changes without coming before the board.
Okay, well, I hear you. You know, we, we have, we'll come back. What can I say?
I got to ask you, since you, you know, it came.
I didn't know that, I didn't, you know, I didn't realize we needed to, but.
Has it happened before? Have you done it anywhere else?
On?
On this easement issue? Changing easements?
Yes, we have on a couple of other occasions, going back many years, as we tried to.
Well, again, I don't, I don't think that was, I don't think it was right.
I agree with you.
So.
So we should get a comprehensive, well, it would have to be a new application, separate from this?
Well, it would be just, it would be a similar application to the gazebo and the bedroom swap. We decide, just because of the procedures, the applicant makes a, an application as, so that we can determine if it's substantial or insubstantial. We determine that, and in this particular case, it was substantial, so they had to, you know, it's a noticing thing, you know, time thing, et cetera. So.
You can do it as all of them, though, all these changes that they've made as one application. They don't have to go separately. It sounds like there's been more than one case where you've changed easements.
Has, has there been more than one case where you've encumbered an affordable unit that didn't originally have this encumbrance?
Yes.
Yeah, that, to me, is totally non-kosher, for lack of a better word. But, you know, again, I guess, I don't know what we're going to do with that right at this moment, but I'm dissing, you know, it, that's a big problem.
Well, to undo what's been done, I mean, a lot of this stuff is post facto, and he doesn't even theoretically control the lots that may be affected.
I, I, I hear you. Does that make it okay?
No, I'm just, I'm just kind of looking into the future here.
Does that keep us from, is it something that can be, can be handled separately from the application we have in front of us today? Or is your feeling that it has to be brought together because it's?
I don't have a strong feeling that way, other than the fact that, back to the other, the first issue, the house in question on the bedroom swap is, is the house.
Right.
That, so, I mean, again, I, yeah, my inclination would be to say we need, we need to make sure that this is even okay before we can approve the bedroom swap. But, I mean, the gazebo is another issue. gazebo is another issue. I think that was more of a technical glitch, if you will, that Marcus flagged, versus us having not, specifically not approved the gazebo. So.
Does anyone have a problem with the gazebo?
I, I don't have a problem with the gazebo. I don't think we probably had a problem with it before, but just, again, Marcus, I believe, you can tell us about the gazebo, but I think it was Marcus who said you didn't get the, you know, explicit permission for the gazebo, when you made application to the bigger pool, for the bigger pool. Is that correct?
The first time, actually, we put in for the gazebo because Steve Butler wanted us to get a wind rate, hurricane rating on it. We didn't think it necessarily needed a permit. So at that point, it, I figured it had gone past Marcus' desk to Steve, and Steve kicked it back. And the second time, it went through, it got flagged by Marcus from a zoning standpoint, but Steve had done his review, and he was happy with the building and part of it. So, you know, a little bit of this is, we're trying to feel our way through what was a little bit of uncertainty for us on that. Again, I mean, the gazebo has been on a couple plans that went in front of you guys, but it wasn't specifically called out on the application, so here we are.
I mean, does anybody have a problem with the gazebo? I was gonna say the ZBA. No? So, I mean, again, the gazebo, I don't, I don't have a problem with the gazebo.
The gazebo doesn't affect anything else that you were discussing, that I answered.
It's in the public space.
I mean, we had a discussion about the homeowners association. The fear is only that if, for some reason, as the amenities got greater, the homeowners association became owners, primarily for the market rate units, but it sounds like the system is, is equitable. But the other things, you know, I know the thing is, the project has been going on for a long time, and, and has been a bit of a struggle, due to timing, probably more than anything, but it doesn't mean that, and you don't have to follow the rules. And again, I'm not also trying to imply that you specifically didn't, or knowingly didn't, but these, these are, these are changes that should have come back here, in my opinion. So, where does that leave us?
I think we need a list of all the changes, and they need to come back and get approved.
And who should the applicant be?
Who should the applicant be?
Rugged Scott, right?
Whoever currently owns it.
I think it should be the developer. Can we, can it, can it lump together, or do they have to be separate applications if they're owned by different people?
I would say that the developer probably doesn't have the authority to make an application on somebody else's property.
No, I guess what I was saying was, can you have an application that's like, you know, you know, the developer and, like, you know, homeowner A, homeowner B, like, have them all together?
Right, because it has to be part of the comprehensive.
They're all, they're all gonna have to be part of it.
Right.
You do applicant and owner.
Yeah.
I mean, I, how many other times?
I mean, can you do like seven owners? No, because it's all different property.
Probably do one application when it comes, so, wait, that's technical.
Yeah.
I'm just curious, how many other times did this easement thing happen, do you think?
I think there's three.
And were they swapped, or were they in addition to the specific list that was part of the comprehensive permit?
They all had garages on the comprehensive permit.
The, the lots in question. Yeah, because there were three that were specifically noted on affordable units that had the easement. I don't remember the numbers. So, do you think those are the three you did, or are you saying there were three additional ones?
We have to do some more research to see what, what the specific arrangement was. I know there were, there's three that have easements. They had garages on the original plan. You know, we lose a lot of money on building the affordables. We, we aren't building affordables with garages. You know, one of the things that, without sounding particularly defensive here, you know, we may have made some mistakes, and so we'll try and do our best to correct them. But the orientation has been, from the beginning, to do something that's not cookie cutter. And so it's got a lot of different sized lots, it's got a lot of things that fit and don't fit, and we've had to make some tweaks and adjustments as we build out to make it work. And so, anyways, that's.
Again, I, I think the project.
That's just kind of, that's the context for us.
Yeah, I think the project looks great, and I commend you for sticking it out, but there are certain things that, you know, need to be tightened up or looked at, and maybe they're, maybe they turn out to be non-issues. If you've already, if you've built on the three, or easemented the three affordable units that were specifically listed already, that's a moot point. You, you had permission. They were on the original plan. I just don't have the list in front of me. But this, this particular one didn't have it.
No, this one didn't, because, and for the reasons that I described, didn't, didn't have room for a garage before.
Right, but because it didn't have, doesn't, doesn't mean you get a, you know, doesn't necessarily mean you get to swap it.
As I said, we, we, we know that the permission for that particular garage is still ahead of us. The easement was put in place, the easement was agreed to by the, you know, the various parties who've been involved, besides us. There's no permit for a garage on that area yet.
Well, again, even the easement should have come here.
Right.
So.
So, can I stop the question? Is that, so Lot 27 is sold, it's owned by someone else, or whatever the encumbered lot is?
Yeah.
The affordable.
So, so, so that person would have, would have had to come before, like, going forward, if this happens, like, two owners agree to do this, are they gonna have to come back before us, too?
Yes.
How do we make clear to them that they have to do that?
Well, that would be, that would be incumbent on the developer to do that. I mean, to, when you buy something, your, your piece of property is encumbered by the comprehensive permit. It's, and again, if you're an affordable unit buying, you might not, buyer, you may or may not have felt you had any leverage in terms of somebody putting an easement on your property, the developer. I mean, it does not, again, if I'm talking about perceptions here, it doesn't feel very good, to me, so, you know, needs to be clarified. And/or, moving forward, yeah, clearly in 50 years, is somebody gonna be coming back when they wanna add something? I mean, they should, because the, the new CEO, whoever it is, Michael and I might still be on the ZBA. You know, they would have to come back, arguably. Go ahead, Eleanor.
I have a few things to say about this, and first of all, to clarify the garage situation of the four lots, of the 10, three of them are shown on previous plans to be subject to garage access and use easements for benefit of market rate lots. They are Lot 14, 20, and 24. Lot 24 was sold within the last year, I believe, and there is an easement reserved for a garage for benefit of Lot, I forget which, oh, well, no, for benefit of Lot 23, that I guess is not being exercised, and it is in the deed for Lot 24. The lot, the deed for Lot 27 also has the same easement that is in all of those affordable rate deeds. It's specific language to these garages that are cited on the affordable lots that are being used for the benefit of a market rate lot. I'm not really sure how the tax collector and assessors are dealing with these structures and the taxable aspect of it, but that's another matter. I had heard from the owner of Lot 27, who didn't understand why he had to have a garage access easement. He said he has the smallest lot on, in the development, and it, I believe it is, it's 4,000 and some square feet. So he in particular is not happy with this, and I believe he spoke to you about it, but I, I agree that this needs to be doubled.
Yeah.
I, I, I mean, I know that Marcus did not grant the building permit for it, because he picked up on it. There was some discussion about garages being allowed. They're allowed for benefit of the lot on which they're being cited, as long as they meet setbacks. That's a different story. So that is incorporated with comp permit, that if, you know, you buy a lot, market or affordable, and you wanna come back and build a garage, you can do it through the HDC, as long as it's your garage on your lot that you maintain, and it meets all the setbacks. That's the story for us.
Yeah. Ed, did you wanna say something specific about this?
Excuse me all, for the record, Ed Pesci, Pesci Engineering, I, I wanted to at least ask if you had any questions from the staff report I had. I'm only asking that question kind of fast-forwarding, because I have a flight and a half an hour, and I can change it if you'd like me to stick around. I was planning to answer any questions related to what's currently done out there. I certainly wasn't aware of this particular garage issue. And also, give you all collectively, I know I've individually given some of you an update on Satchin's path, and just give you a quick summary on what's going on with Satchin's path. So first, would any of you have any questions with what's happened on the infrastructure and the current work that's been done?
Let's stick to Rugged Scott. Does anybody have any specific questions? I mean, again, looks to me like.
We, we do have some work to be done. There's still things that aren't done, obviously, and there's some repairs, as I mentioned in the report, that Mr. Feely and I are coordinating together, and I'll be, I'll be overseeing that later in the year. But honestly, since they've restarted, if I can use that term loosely, restarted the effort, things have come together quite quickly in the last year, and actually look pretty good.
Yeah, and you continue to monitor it.
Absolutely, yep, will do.
I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable with that. So what I'd like to do is just wait on Satchin's path for a few minutes. I don't think we're gonna belabor this point too much longer.
Understood.
Unless anybody wants to, but I think we're clear on what we'd like to do. So, I think we could probably take a vote on the gazebo issue. Yeah?
Sure.
So, what are we gonna, is somebody make a motion to grant the relief requested specific to the gazebo construction?
Sure.
Yeah? Did you have a question, Jeff?
No.
No? All right. Oh, Eleanor. Oh, audience. Is there anybody in the audience who came to speak about this?
I'm a homeowner.
Oh, okay. Yeah, the mic would be great, and please identify yourself.
Sure, my name is Matthew Martinez. I'm the owner of Two Thistle Way. I have owned the property for about a year now, and just received a letter in the mail. I think you had to notify all the homeowners, so I decided to come today. Just, you know, I'm, I'm really pleased with the neighborhood. I think it's a unique concept, with, I've never lived in a, or had a home in a, in a 40B. I think the mix is, is, is a wonderful thing for, I think, both the affordables and what you're referring to as market rate. Is this the only development of its, of this kind on the island, or are there many?
There are not many. This, this.
Five, or a dozen.
A dozen, okay. Well, you know, I, I really just wanted to come here to listen and learn, and have had an opportunity to speak, and really commend Josh on, on the work that he's done. I know it's been, you know, it's been a tough road. I mean, most developers might, might not do the right thing after 10 years, losing a lot of money, or I'm not sure of the financial situation, but as a homeowner, I'm really pleased with what I see. I'm really pleased with how Josh has handled issues amongst the community, fixing things. Jamie's done a great job with the, with the houses. As a homeowner, I'm, I'm, I'm happy here. So, if, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, should we go to the motion?
Sure. So the motion's been made and seconded to grant the relief with regard to the gazebo construction, as submitted. Yes? Who made that motion? You?
Your body is insubstantial, right?
Well, I thought, I thought we already did that last time.
We didn't address the gazebo specifically.
Oh, so the gazebo is new? Okay. I thought that was part of the last one. So all we're doing on the gazebo is, is, well, deeming it insubstantial or substantial.
Insubstantial.
So, if you wouldn't mind changing your motion.
So my motion then is to, to determine that the gazebo is in, in substantial change.
To the comprehensive, make a finding, okay.
Michael seconded that.
All right, Michael seconded that. So, the five regular members could, can vote on that one and be done with it. So, all those in favor say aye. All right, so, then the other issues, I think, are still out there, and some of them need to be, possibly need to be submitted, again. If not, so we're.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I could, just to ask one request, we, we've had a lot of wheel spinning going on with this gazebo. I appreciate the vote in approving it. It's sitting in my park, wrapped in plastic, ready to get built for the last, you know, two months. We're very anxious to get it built and up by the end of the month. I believe Eleanor has a letter. The building department, which has run us around quite a bit with this wind rating two times and whatnot, is ready to allow us to build the, build the gazebo as soon as the letter that Eleanor has, has written can be signed. And so I just would ask if that could be expedited. We really need to get that up, so we can get the sod in, so we can finish the park, because we got a lot of people arriving.
I'll read it before I leave. Does anybody have a problem with that?
No.
Does anybody else want to read it?
Does everybody have to sign it, or just you?
Just I'm the lucky winner. You can read it.
Sure.
I'll read it, I mean, I don't wanna hold the hearing.
Okay. So, then the other issue about the bedroom count needs to be continued, correct?
It's up to you.
Well, or we can vote on it, you're saying? Obviously, we could vote on it, but definitely.
God's sakes.
I'm asking, I guess, more than telling. It appears it needs to be continued because of the question of the sale of the lot and the cost certification, and whether or not at least that needs to be noticed, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Could we approve it, if we approve the swap, it doesn't necessarily bless the sale, we're just saying that if, that the room swap, because if they get, if they call this week, or talk to the subsidizing agency and find it's okay, then we've cost them another month. And you're, are you building this house now, or what's, yeah, okay, so, I, because I don't, I mean, I personally don't have a problem with the swap. The underlying question I would like answered, but I, but if the underlying question comes back to that it wasn't okay for this transaction to happen, then it's, the room swap doesn't matter. But if it comes back that it's okay, and it comes back sooner rather than later, then, then they have to come back and do this again. But I don't know if we approve it.
Yeah, we're gonna take a five-minute hiatus, just let Ed give us the quick, quick update on Satchin's.
Thank you, Your Honor. Are you all aware, certainly, that Phase II project, the blue and the green, from a phasing plan, I thought this would be helpful today. Folks, there are 23, excuse me, 24 homes that are planned for this. 23 foundations are in the ground. One of the two habitat, remaining habitat for humanity homes is not done yet. There's a big pile of dirt on top of it, there's no place to put it right now, and they're framing their, their, their house. Of those 23, seven are only left to be framed. The rest of them are in the process of being framed. There's some that actually have had walkthroughs with the residents, the future residents. They're making very, very good progress. We plan to have binder down on the road here in the next week or two, hopefully next week or so, 10 days, on the Phase II road, depending on the schedule for, for Victor and what have you. He's got a lot of irons in the fire this time of year. So there were a few, few conflicts that need to be taken care of. Overall, the project's going very smooth. The folks that are the contractor, general contractor, JKS Scanlon and Delbrook Construction, learned a lot from the first phase, it's gone very well. Always hiccups with new construction, but there's been a lot of good, good things going forward. to take care of those things. So in the not-too-distant future, it's going to look like something to take a small tour in the near future for all of you. So I'll certainly keep that in mind. They've asked me to get, you know, a date when you'd like to do that perhaps, but they're approaching, you know, occupancy here at the end of the summer for several homes. So when that happens, I think that would be a good opportunity to do that at some point, and I'll let Eleanor know so we could, you know, do that with enough notice.
I thought we got an invitation.
You did, from Laura Reckford, which I forwarded to you.
Oh, okay.
That's June 14th, 8:30 to 11:00 a.m. The D.O.S., the RSDP.
So Laura's going to do a tour?
Yeah, Karen.
Okay.
All righty. Any questions for Ed?
Ed, when's that last foundation going in?
So it probably won't go in until the end of the, end of the summer, or into the, it'll be in the fall, I should say. It's a habitat home, so they're just starting to frame the habitat home, and they, we really need to get the rest of the site work kind of out of the way, or most of the site work out of the way before they can move that. But it will be done, the concrete will go on the ground before the winter, obviously, but they're not, they're not in any major push for that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much, everyone.
All right. So back to Susan talking about poss, were you getting up to say something when I interrupted you?
No.
Well, I'd be happy to speak to it, but at the board's pleasure.
Yeah, of course. Go ahead.
I was just going to say about the swap, which is between Three Woodlily and Four Cranberry, Three Woodlily, which is a cedar, actually has more ground coverage. It's a bigger lot. And so I thank Josh, and I think that this lot and this program is better suited for a four-bedroom than this one down here. And so just a little background about what those lots look like and what those houses look like and the footprints that would go with you. So this one's currently designated four, this is currently designated three, and we're asking to swap that.
I don't have any fundamental problem with the swap. It's much more the Ts and the Is getting crossed and dotted, and my problem with approving it at this point, and I'm not saying I wouldn't, is that then it gets sold, and then we're back to what Michael was describing before, well, you know, it's done. What are we going to do about it? So I don't know how to get by that, or if anybody cares about it. The bedroom count still stays the same. Unfortunately, this is this one specific lot that has the cloud over it in my mind vis-à-vis the sale of the lot.
I assume that the applicant would be willing to memorialize today that you won't convey it out until this is, or until this is fixed at this level.
Yeah, I mean, I think that that's fine, and, you know, there are a number of different ways. We're going to make sure that this lot and all of the costs and expenses relating to it are transparent, are disclosed, are part of the cost certification, and if anything has an impact on the profit cap, that it's there. And so we're going to, we're going to make sure that that happens. And we'll get feedback from the subsidizing agency and anybody who has regulatory authority here as quickly as I can arrange it. And if we've done something wrong, we'll fix it. And if we haven't, we'll explain.
Again, I don't have a problem with, does anybody have a problem with the swap keeping the overall bedroom count the same?
No.
No. So it's much more, again, I would want to, if we were going to take a vote today, I'd want to, and I, can we, we can't really condition it per se, can we?
Well, I think we could, we could condition it to be in, to be in compliance with the comp permit. The question right now is that it's not, it's not in compliance because it was, there might, this might be perceived as outside the...
That's a whole new hearing, what we're talking about, these other issues. So that's a whole new hearing with the new butter notification, and it's coming up because you're reviewing, you're doing an overview. It's not coming up necessarily because of the swap. So I don't think you can condition it per se. We can certainly request the ultimate return with full application to rectify all the other outstanding concerns.
Well, I mean, the only condition that I was, would have been interested in is that you can't convey it until this is cleared up.
Then I guess we can't do it because of what Eleanor's saying is we have to have a new hearing, and for me, it's a question of whether this is a compliant transaction.
I thought I just heard the applicant say that he wouldn't convey it.
Well, he did. So if we're all comfortable with that versus, you know, just waiting. I will go so far as to say I wouldn't probably be inclined to sign any more building permit applications either, or the document that I have to sign to go forward until these issues are clarified. Just because I'd like to get them clarified, as I'm sure you would.
I think that's fair.
We want it clarified, as well. Just being brought to us today, and we don't think we've done anything wrong. We have...
Yeah, I'm good with that. So you're good with the applicant saying they won't convey it?
I think that this is a public record.
Right.
As far as I'm concerned, it's being taped. And, I mean, he's got a long way to go in this, to finish this, this project. So I think that he's a reasonable applicant, and I'm happy, and I, as far as truth and veracity go, I'm intent.
Works for me. So we're voting to, we've already deemed it substantial, so we're just may, we're voting to grant the relief.
Because the two-part, you're assenting to the change, the bedroom swap, that is part of the declaration of easements, and you're voting to modify the comp permit to reflect this change.
So just run that by me again. One is we're changing the declaration of easements?
Restrictions and easements.
And then we're modifying the comprehensive permit?
You just need, the ZVA has the authority to assent to this type of change.
Okay, we're assenting. All right.
There are some changes that we do not have the authority over. That goes to the Homeowner Association of Developer.
Got you.
This does, though.
So can I make that motion then?
Yes.
To assent, assent to the change to the declaration of restrictions and easements?
Yep.
And we're changing the...
And modify the comp.
Modify the comp permit to reflect that change.
And then the specific change is the swap, and we'll get the right lot numbers in there. Yeah.
Do we, do we, we don't care where the other bedroom comes from, do we?
It's already, we already talked about that. So Susan made that motion?
It's definitely coming, just to be 100% clear. It's coming from a market, it's coming from Satchin's. It's coming from another market rate unit, correct? All right. And that, again, those units were noted. Okay?
I'll second that.
Okay. Again, let's just go with the regular members. Is there, Susan made the motion, Lisa seconded it. Is there any further discussion? No, all of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
You have yours?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on. Took a little longer than anticipated. Forty-one sixteen, Linda Mason, Twenty-three Montomoyle Road. Is anyone here for that? Mr. Dale, are you stepping in?
I'm not.
Okay. Well, we're going to give...
To continue it to the next year.
Yeah, we'll give them the benefit of the doubt and continue it to... When is the next year?
Is it July 13?
July 13, 2017. So will somebody make that motion?
I'll make that. I'll second it.
All right. Nobody's here to speak about it since they didn't get up, I assume. Okay.
I'm not sitting.
All right. So Michael's not sitting on it, so just, we'll start with Mark and go far deep that way. Okay?
Mark's not there.
Not there. Oh, Mark's not there.
Susan.
Mark has a comment.
Susan, me, you, Karen, and Jeff.
I'm going to sit up. No, that's fine. Yeah. Okay?
All those in favor?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Did Mark vote yes on it?
Ah, okay, I got to get my wits about me. Twelve seventeen, Eight Dairy More LLC. Eight Dairy More for the applicant.
Hi, I'm Peter Barnes. I'm the homeowner, along with my wife Cheryl and my dad Curtis, who appeared before you couldn't be here today. He had to get off the island for the graduation of my niece in Philadelphia, his granddaughter. So I'm trying to stand in for him, which I know is probably impossible, but you had requested some additional information from us about the project, the before and after, location of the foundation. I believe I've supplied that with surveys, and I'm here to answer any additional questions you may have.
Okay. Thank you. I guess to catch up here to the paperwork. Does anybody have any specific questions? What we had asked for, I believe, was a sort of a before and after.
Yeah, I see, is this new survey the after?
It appears to be the after.
The one, hold on, I just find, so the one in the back of the packet, hold on. Oh, this froze. I got to go back, that's fine, I was just on it. There's one on page... Oh, hang on. One seventy-four, that's dated, what date is that?
Yeah, November ninth.
November ninth, and there's one further down in the packet. I thought I saw that it wasn't.
Well, there's one on one seventy-three as well.
There's one on one fifty-one, too.
Yeah, I think that's also one.
I see. So one seventy-three was 2014, and that had that stoop at 10.7. And then now it's at 8.8, 13.7. So the house is in the same place.
Just one up.
What page is that, Susan?
One seventy-three, one seventy-four.
Yeah, the house is in the same place. And again, just refresh my memory because I'm confused. Is the reason for the extra step because you had to go up?
Yeah, when we, when we put a new foundation, it had been, I guess we'd call it rubble foundation, so we replaced the foundation when we did the renovation and ended up eight inches a little higher than the earlier foundation. So that necessitated the step down from the landing.
Okay. We also asked for clarification on the building code as to the landing, and I, what you've noted here, I don't really think was our question. I think we had a question as to the, oh, right, no, here it is. Every landing shall have a minimum dimension of 36 inches measured in every direction of travel. So this is, this happens to be bigger, I think. Do we care?
What'd you say?
I think that the existing stoop, the built stoop was bigger than 36.
Sorry, guys. It's okay.
It happens. Does anybody care?
That the old one was bigger?
No, the new one is bigger.
Doesn't even really look like there was a stoop before. It's hard to tell. Looks like it was a brick, that a brick stoop? It's hard to tell on the pictures.
Is that the pictures?
Yeah, it says listing photo. And then the next picture is it completed, and it's a big wood stoop.
Oh.
How do you feel about this, Michael?
Took a look at it, I mean, I think it looks to me like it's in the same place.
Well, the building is in the same place.
Yeah, so, you know, there was nothing, was it intentional that it went up an extra eight inches in the elevation of the house? Probably not. So it was a mistake made. I don't, I don't, I didn't notice that the stoop was particularly large, or I don't...
That's it now, yeah.
I didn't see the dimension of what it currently is, but...
I think the other thing to point out is many of the, if you look at the photos that follow the, on the street, a lot of the houses are close to the road. It's not as if this is an anomaly.
Is this the existing, this was not the, that's, that's a...
This is existing here. But it's hard to see what's...
Right, I didn't make some, thank you.
Well, it's not...
One seventy-six. And if you look at the GIS map, it's definitely not...
I mean, quite frankly, I think it probably could have been compliant, but, you know, you just have to go sideways or something. A friendship stamp.
This one's yours? Or is it the neighbors that we're looking at?
Oh, it's not raised, but intended, yeah.
But?
It looks like there were two steps. You know, the brick step might have been the, I don't know, sorry.
I did.
Ah.
I did.
Bill, how do you feel about this, Jeffrey?
I feel like, I feel like it could have been done differently. It probably could have been done to be compliant, but I feel like I can find my way along as it is.
What kind of relief are we contemplating here?
Variance.
A variance. I mean, to me, that's problematic, because, again, as I look at it, you probably could have complied.
Well, it doesn't meet the standards of a variance, too.
Well, the lot's a rectangle, so we've done it before. Probably Mr. Dale made that argument.
You can base the variance on the, on the situation of the structure, which has been there since 1924, within the lot. I've done this before, I've seen it done before, it's something that I can...
See if we're to parlay or press loans or...
Craft.
I mean, the house didn't move up and down. They need a landing in front of it.
And arguably, they needed to be out of the ground for building code?
Sure.
I can live with it. Let's move on. Maybe, or let's take a vote, at least.
I think we're going to have to vote.
Yeah.
So we're going to the steering office, morning?
Was it, did Jeff make a motion earlier?
No.
He said he could...
No. I don't know what he said.
See his way through it?
I think so. I mean, it's unfortunate, but is there any huge benefit? No. And as Lisa said, the other houses on the street are close to the road. Some of them, the actual structures are closer.
Number 10 seems to be much closer, number six looks much closer, based on the GIS map.
Obviously, all we would be blessing is the stairs, the steps, nothing future.
Right. Is there any work done in the future that'll make them compliant?
Well, I like that. I like that.
Any work.
So anyway, are we okay with that? So do you want to make that motion? Go ahead. Oh, is there anybody in the audience on this one?
Good thing for Eleanor.
I didn't eat lunch. No, okay. So, having said that, somebody should make a motion.
So I'll make a motion to grant the relief as requested, based on the finding that is... Do I need to make, I don't need to make the finding?
Well, why don't we, do you mind just putting something in your motion as to, based on the fact that to comply with building code, they had to raise the building necessitating an extra step, because the building is in the same place.
The building is in the same location. Sure. And did we want to do something about... And did we want to do something about, like, the conditions that Michael brought up, that if there was any further work done, they would make it comply, or is that...
I wasn't referring, I'm just specifically talking to the front of the building.
Right.
To the steps.
Yeah.
To the steps.
Yeah, don't be going and putting a big railing in, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay.
Okay?
It's fine.
So is that a second?
I'll second that, although I think Jeff wanted to.
All right, Jeff can second, if you want to, go ahead, speak up.
Go ahead, second.
All right, so...
We got to beat Jeff.
Three, four, five, we'll start with Jeff, and go this way, all right? So any further discussion? No, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yes, Jeffrey, Karam, Michael, Edward, Lisa. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, 1317, do, we still need to vote on that, the applicant, Mark and Pia Abate, and Mark and Elizabeth Norris, his owners, would like to withdraw without prejudice. Does anybody have any concern about that?
Not sitting.
Michael O'Meara is not sitting. I certainly don't.
I don't have any concerns.
No, so will someone make a motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Lisa and Karam, second.
I'm not voting on this.
Susan's not voting, Mark, we'll start with you, now that you are here. So five of us this way, not Michael. So Mark, Lisa, Edward, Karam, we'll let Jim vote on this one instead of Jeff. So withdrawal without prejudice, any further discussion? No, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Sankity Head, I am not sitting on, um...
I'm not sitting on any of the applications.
Do we have to introduce it? Application number 14-17, Sankity Head Golf Club.
How many motions have we had on this one already?
Madam Chairman, Kevin Dale for the applicant, Sankity Head Golf Club. As you recall, back on March 8th, you issued a modification to an existing special permanent variance by unanimous vote that allowed the construction use and maintenance of four duplex cottages for employee housing at the Sankity Club property at 100 Sankity Road. And after that decision was filed, a neighbor appealed the decision, Mr. Worley, Kevin Worley, who's here, and I was able to have good substantive discussions with Mr. Worley about his concerns, which were specifically that the proposed location of the cottages was close to Sankity Road and the bike path, and could cause some traffic and safety problems. So I discussed with Mr. Worley and his attorney, Dan Bailey, some options, one of which was to relocate the four cottages from the vicinity of 90 Sankity Road up to and close to the entrance road to the club, pull them back, and put them in the vicinity of the other dormitories that are now located at the Sankity Golf Club. So this is another request for a modification of the existing special permit and variance to approve the relocation of the four cottages to the new site, and in addition to that, asking you to grant a special permit to waive five of the 24 off-street parking spaces that are required for duplexes. Reason for that request is, most of the employees who will be living in these cottages don't have vehicles or will not have vehicles, all of them can walk to work, obviously, they walk up the street, and it makes sense to waive five of these off-street parking spaces, and in fact, provide 19 parking spaces, which will be more than sufficient to take care of the needs of the occupants, and to make sure that traffic and safety is addressed. Obviously, it's a better location, because entrance to the cottage area will be from the entrance road and not from Sankity Road or Popus Road, it'll avoid crossing the bike path, it'll avoid, it'll provide an access that already exists to the other dormitories, and it's just a better location all around, and I want to publicly thank Mr. Worley for suggesting it and for his concerns, because I think it's a better result. The club will happily comply with all of the other conditions you imposed on March 8th. If you recall, it was to limit each unit to six occupants, knowing that there are two units in each structure. We'll build all the cottages in accordance with the HDC approved plans and the Cottage Option Plan 4, which all of you have a copy of, you're looking at. The club won't sell any cottages separately, and all of them will be occupied only by club employees and their families. So it asks that you, again, modify the existing special permit and variance. You've already found the right criteria to do it, and ask you to find that criteria again, and make a finding that what's proposed is substantially better, actually, not less detrimental, but better for the neighborhood than what's there now. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you.
So Kevin, everything's pretty much the same, I thought in the March meeting, we waived the five spots?
We didn't waive the five spots in the March meeting, because I didn't request the waiver under section 13918D2, and the administrator pointed out that you couldn't really grant the waiver of off-street parking spaces unless it had been specifically requested. So that's a new request that's before you today, is to waive, again, five of the 24 required off-street parking spaces.
It looked like you would actually fit 24 before, I mean, it was a different site plan, so it was a little bit easier to do that possibly, but...
Yeah.
The plan that's in here shows that there was parking for 24 vehicles.
I think the prior Cottage Options 3 plan, with the prior proposed site down near 90 Sankity Road, did show the 24, but the club's position is, it doesn't need 24, it would rather have green space and vegetation there than parking spaces. It will provide screening between the parking spaces and Sankity Road, and 19 Franklin would be more than sufficient to address any off-street parking needs, because again, the parking spaces would be limited to only the employees that live in the cottages, most of whom don't have cars. I mean, club members and visitors would not park in these parking spaces, because, in fact, they're located away from where members and visitors go.
How does everybody feel about giving up the parking, I mean, it's certainly ample room of putting it in, but...
I don't have any problem.
I don't think they need it.
I mean, I think, you know, if they determine they need more parking, they'll put more parking, but it doesn't make any sense to...
Force it.
You know, put in more than they need.
Anybody have any other questions?
I have one clarification that I'd like to make here, it says that the typical dormitory is six-bedroom, to me, that means 12-person occupancy by virtue of the definition of a bedroom under the Board of Health Code. If the occupancy is only going to be six, then the occupancy should be listed as six and not as six bedrooms.
I think that's a good point, is that how it was, each duplex shall be limited to six occupants, is how, one of the conditions.
Right, just to clarify, not to be contentious, it's not a dormitory, each of them are separate employee cottages, but what we're asking for is to limit occupants to six persons per duplex unit.
Yeah, we, I think we discussed that at length last time.
Right, so I think the plan should say not six bedrooms, but occupancy low six maximum per unit.
Yes, I agree. That revision's fine with me.
Okay. Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak? Anybody want to make a motion then? Or any more discussion?
Make a motion to approve the application as requested.
Who's in that same criteria that we...
The previous...
Specifically, the previous approvals.
With the addition of the parking, I guess that's...
Yeah. Let's change the waiver of the parking. Okay, does anybody want to...
What was your site plan?
Yes.
Just with that revision?
With that revision.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, um, who wants to vote? Just, hold on, one, two.
Yeah, why aren't we already sitting, who's not be sitting on this?
Me, you, Karam, Jeff and Jim.
Jim.
So why don't we just stick with that? Okay, and that works with the motions, right? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks very much.
You're welcome. Of course.
What happened?
I approve. A little bit of a parking waiver. Parking waiver.
Okay, John, let me just catch up here with some paperwork here, where are we? 1517, Michael L. Stone and Susan A. Stone, 6 Marcus Way for the applicant.
Madam Chairman.
Yes, sir.
If we have six, if I could sit, then myself, I'd like to be excused.
Okay, you know, now that you're saying that...
I asked, I wanted to arrange it earlier.
Yeah, now that you're saying, well, this, just to settle on that, I don't think I have a conflict either, my brother is on the butters list, though? And... So maybe that's a conflict? If we want to wait and get Mark and Jeff back here?
Mark has left.
Yeah, I think Mark's gone.
Mark has left the building. Okay, one, two.
We have to wait for Jeff.
Three, four.
Mark left.
So, uh, then...
I don't have a conflict, I just have something, a time commitment, that's all, so...
So do I, I was trying to catch you both, that's not why, my brother does live there.
No, I understand, so I'm perfectly willing to stay, if you think that you have a legitimate...
Well, I guess I'm asking more than saying I have a conflict, he and I haven't talked about...
It doesn't necessarily matter to me, Mr. Chairman, if you prefer to wait for Jeff, that's absolutely fine as well. I'm easy.
Jeff, are you able to stay?
I'm sorry?
Are you able to stay?
Stay.
At the meeting?
Sit on Marcus Way? Probably, the perception is prob, again, since we had a long discussion about perception earlier, maybe I should not sit.
I think you can catch your breath.
Okay, goodbye.
So...
Your excuse to go.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
I think, I think I'm good to...
Yes, I was actually speaking to Michael.
Thank you.
You were leaving anyways, so...
Yeah, Ed Weasel.
Okay.
Okay, this is...
I'm gonna sign this, because you're gonna be okay with this.
Yes, application 15-17, Michael L. Stone and Susan A. Stone, for the applicant.
Good afternoon, for the applicants, Michael L. Stone and Susan A. Stone, Attorney John Brescher. What you have before you this afternoon is a request for a modification to an existing variance, or in the alternative, a new variance to validate two lots as separately marketable and buildable. I'll give you a quick history of this property, because it's really kind of bizarre, frankly. The property is at 6 Marcus Way, and it is shown as Lot 963 on Land Court Plan, and since the, since, honestly, probably since about the 20s, 30s, et cetera, there was always a way running through the property, and it was Coffin Road, and up until about 19, late 80s at least, it was unconstructed, so it was deemed as one lot under the, under the Land Court and under the town's bylaw. In the, I believe, the late 80s, early 90s, the Wright's Landing subdivision came into effect, planning board granted the subdivision, and as part of the subdivision approval, a requirement was to improve Coffin Road as an access, which Jeff showed with the developer, he hadn't easement to do so. Once they developed and improved Coffin Road, it triggered the definition of lot under the zoning bylaw, which suddenly rendered, basically suddenly rendered the two, the existing lot unbuildable, because all of a sudden, it now has two lots, because the definition of lot says that the property can't be bisected by an improved way, which all of a sudden Coffin Road was. So this came to light in 2000, when the owners applied for a second dwelling permit with the planning board, and the planning board effectively said, hey, wait a second, this isn't good, you know, we can't, we can't quite grant this, because you've suddenly have two unbuildable lots under the definition of our code. So the applicants went to the Board of Appeals, they presented a few options to the Board of Appeals, ultimately, I think with the input of the planning board, perhaps town council, I'm not sure, they said, okay, we'll grant you variance relief, and, you know, it's conditioned on three things, one is that the portions A and B on the attached plan are going to be limited to one dwelling, which shall contain a single dwelling unit, okay, makes sense. Portions A and B shall be held in common ownership, and then condition C said, relative to the ground cover, you know, it shall not exceed the 3% maximum level ground cover. And all of this was, was fine in 2000, but then fast forward 16 years, and my client has been trying to construct the second dwelling for that long. If you look on the GIS, you can see that there's been a foundation there for, you know, well over, well over a decade, but nothing has been improved. So what he's here before you to ask is to eliminate condition B, saying that portions A and B shall be held in common ownership. He would like to put it in, have the ability to put it into separate ownership, and the reason for that is honestly twofold. One is for lending purposes, he wants to get a construction loan to finish building the second dwelling. Problem is, basically, the bank's not, the bank wasn't going to lend on it, because it's deemed one entire lot. So he's trying to say, well, I really want to separate them for the purposes of this construction, the only feasible way to do that is to have them in separate ownership. The other aspect of it is that he, he and his sister owned the property for a while, he bought out his sister, now he and his wife own it, joint tenants for the right of survivorship, they have two kids, ideally, he'd like to be able to leave each child one lot for purposes of estate planning and equity. So the request is effectively so, to have these two lots be in separate ownership, that's what he would, that's the end, end goal of this, and the two ways that he's looking to accomplish this would be, one, by either eliminating condition B on the, on the existing variance, or in the alternative, requesting a new variance validating the two lots as separately marketable and buildable. I think he has justification under the, under the new variance, because per section 13933L of the bylaw, basically, when the town creates a non-conformity, the properties are deemed grandfathered, that's a very succinct way of saying it. And I think the argument can be made that because the planning board effectively requested that Coffin Road be constructed, which in turn created this non-conformity, because as it stands under the definition of lot, you know, the two, the two bisected parcels don't meet the zoning intensity regulations for lot size, they're, they're way undersized. But because the town implicitly created this non-conformity... But because the town implicitly created this non-conformity under this section of the bylaw, they would be considered grandfathered. He's not trying to use this as a windfall by any means. He's not trying to sell it to make a profit on this. I said the purpose is really twofold. One is for the mortgage, so he can get a construction loan to finish the second dwelling, and the other is for estate planning and equity purposes. It's a very peculiar situation. I would say it is unique, but I believe there are maybe one or two other properties that have this similar situation with it. I know the town is actually doing a good job at cleaning this up with their yard sale program, getting rid of the paper streets, so that situations like this don't necessarily occur. But what we have here is, I mean, it, to a certain degree, the Board of Appeals was able to cure the issue in two thousand, but a new set of circumstances has, have come up, and he's requesting that we eliminate the condition so that the two lots can be owned separately. That's, that's effectively it. If you have any questions, as I said, this is a, this is a strange one. But if you have any questions, please, I'm happy to, happy to answer them.
Can, I just have one question. Why, why was he having trouble building the second dwelling for ten years?
I'm not sure, to be honest with you.
It wasn't a permitting issue.
No, no.
Anything that the town wasn't allowing to happen.
I spoke with this gentleman many, many months ago before this was presented, and he contacted me about reactivating the permit. We had a discussion. But at the time, they had full permits for both. He didn't have enough financing to continue construction of it. Now the cap found it here.
I think part of it, too, was that when the original Z B A permit was filed, he, as I said, he and his sister owned it. And I'm not sure where in the timeline is that he bought his sister out. I think relatively recently, say, last two or three years. So that may have had something to do with, you know, family dynamic, trying to get the, everything together to finish the, the dwelling. But there's no, there's nothing on the town's end that, that prohibited this.
I was just curious about that.
Yeah, the, I, I believe, I believe the variance from two thousand cured whatever issue there was on the town's end in terms of getting a second dwelling permit and then a building permit.
Okay. Does anybody have any other questions up here, or I'm gonna go to the audience? Are you here to speak?
No.
No, okay.
I think this is a pretty unique application with tents. I'll make a motion to modify the, uh, the variance, which will then, what, omit section B?
Yep.
Okay. That will be my motion.
The second that.
Okay. All those in favor?
Uh, may I ask?
Yes.
I'm sorry, but if you had a chance to read my staff report, I did have a lengthy discussion with Mike Roger, Director of Planning, about this. There is another application probably coming down the pipeline. That's why this gentleman's in the back.
Oh.
There are a lot of even, got an even trickier situation, or comparable tricky situation, with the bissection of the lot by a road that has now been reactivated.
Is he nine sixty-four?
He, uh, he was nine sixty-four.
Let's see.
So, at any rate, there was one of the, one of the conditions in the original variance was as to three percent ground cover maximum to the entire lot area, which at that time included the roadway. I hadn't discussed this with Ben Rusev. His feeling was, they're getting something, so we need to restrict their ground cover, and I laid out a pretty elaborate calculation in the staff report.
Oh, I saw that, yeah.
You don't have to stick to that, obviously, but it's a sample.
So that would just be moving forward, all these lots would be handled the same way?
So, so in other words, you would also have to modify the condition to increase the ground cover to be more specific.
And did you come up with these numbers and show Andrew as well?
Yes.
Okay, I'm fine with these numbers.
And I, yeah.
If this is gonna come up again...
And how many more times can, can it come up? How many more lots is, is, are, divided by Marcus Way?
I believe he is, is the only, he's got two lots.
Yeah.
Kerry Phelps is the only other one.
Yeah. It's his, like, he's looked at nine sixty-four in this plan.
Yeah.
Right, you see where it goes. It's just...
So he had three pieces.
He's got three pieces.
Yeah. So in all cases, the road would be taken out of the square footage of the lot?
Yeah. Yeah.
That seems reasonable, I guess.
Yeah, yeah.
Because this is gonna come up again, and it relates more to the three percent. But I have an issue with the whole thing. If we want to grant it because of a hardship, I'm okay with this. But Marcus Way was there. Um, it was an easement, it was on record. They, it looks like they wanted to keep it as one lot for their benefit back then, and now they want to subdivide it essentially for whatever reason. But I don't agree with the analysis. I don't think, you know, the way just didn't appear all of a sudden. It was always a record. It was, it, just because it was paved doesn't mean that suddenly it appeared. I don't consider this a taking by the town, because it was a public road, I, I, I...
Coffin Street, you mean?
Yeah, Coffin, I'm sorry.
If I, if I may, I did a lot of research on this. Coffin Road really wasn't on the ground at all until about nineteen ninety-six or ninety-eight. I, I looked at the aerials, and it was, so Wrights Landing was approved in ninety-six and started to be built out in ninety-seven, more like ninety-eight. There was one structure in ninety-eight, in two thousand three, and the core, et cetera. It was paved by two thousand three on the aerials.
Wrights Landing needed to pave Coffin Road to get to Wrights Landing.
Correct. Wrights Landing has a domed roadway lot. It's a, it's a subdivision, it's a cluster subdivision. So they reactivated the road.
Yeah.
So, yes, it's been shown on a land court plan forever, but it was not activated when these people bought this lot. And they had no reason to believe it was going to be. That was all a huge swath of property owned by one person.
But it was still there. It was still a cloud, or, at the very least, or...
Yeah.
It was a private way, though, until the town decided to pave it and make it official.
No, it was a road.
So, so technically, legally, they bought this lot, subject to a road going through it, so...
I think I agree. I don't feel that, I'm not sure why...
And I don't, I'm not sure, when I read the language of, uh, when the planning board makes that decision, I don't think this, that contemplated this situation. I think that provision of the code kind of contemplates...
More so for ta, for takings, that's, that, that, that's...
Yeah, where they, they weren't, the planning board didn't take this, this lot.
No.
They merely forced the...
No, but I, but I think one of the unintended consequences of the planning board's decision, and requesting that this, this roadway be improved, was that it created two lots under the, under, under the town's own definition of lot. That was, that was the issue.
Yeah, I don't agree with that, but if the rest of the board does.
I see your point, though, Jim.
I don't, I don't think we should set precedent with it, I guess, is my concern.
To have them be in, not held in common ownership.
Yeah, in terms of the, I, the financing issue, I mean, could the, what's the issue? Could they both pledge?
So I...
The both lots as security, both lots?
Yeah.
Which is really one lot, which is common ownership.
Right, I mean, what, we, we thought about other ways to go around this. For instance, trying to say, hey, can we do it into common, something like common control? But the, at the end of the day, the bank is going to want its own interest on this one piece of, you know, on this one piece of, you know, property. On that one piece of property that's being, that we're the construction is on. That's, that, that's why we couldn't, again, we thought, trying to think outside the box, maybe we can mention common controls, try to come up with some other provision that could, could work here. But I think ultimately, in order, in order for him to get his construction loan just on that portion and still leave the existing house, which is, which has been completed for, you know, fifteen years or so, that they would have to be within separate ownership, they, for the purpose of that loan.
So, you know, maybe I'm okay with this change of facts and potential hardship. I'm okay with it, but the pure analysis of it not being a road, but then suddenly it was a road when the planning board create, put pavement there.
I think people didn't think of an expedition to remove the road. There was a situation out in Tom Never's where, in fact, one of his colleagues did file an expedition to eliminate some portions of some roadways in Tom Never's. It's a very elaborate, as you know, process to do an expedition. Everybody on that plan has to be notified, it's, you know, it's very obvious.
Yeah.
So that's, it's, that's one option, but it takes a very, very long time, and it's not assured.
How could they do that with Coffin Road being the access to Wrights Landing?
They couldn't do it now.
Yeah, so...
It's too late.
Yeah, they, they would have had to have done it before Wrights Landing was ever contemplated, really.
And the thing is, Van Fleet was approved right before that. So Wrights Landing might have gone through that bit, 'cause it was actually the same owner originally when they sold it truly. But they, they did first Van Fleet, and then, and that's a little lollipop, and then they did Marcus Way, and then they did Wrights Landing. So they were sort of developing these, these cluster subdivisions all around.
So the, the future situations just relate to this particular road?
It's just the one other lot. And they will prob, they will probably be coming in there, there going with the planning board, and they're doing, dealing with a similar situation.
Is the other lot, well, I guess, I don't know that matters, but is the other lot developed in similar manner, where there's the desire to have multiple lots?
You know, I think they're looking to regularize it, because it's got this situation where it's bisected by a roadway.
Well, he's gonna want to create a separate, you know, separate marketable lot.
He'd have to create three separate marketable lots.
We actually shouldn't discuss...
Yeah, I know, we can't.
Right.
It's a state.
Right.
So what, my point is, if this didn't exist, if this roadway didn't exist, there would always be one lot, correct?
Absolutely, yeah.
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 That's...
So in a sense, it's a lot of record, but it hasn't been validated as such. And it's shown on a land court plan in nineteen, you know, the roadway.
And, and you wouldn't be able to subdivide it?
No.
You're creating two undersized lots.
Two undersized lots, yeah.
I, I think, you know, he's got, what, whatever he should have done, or shouldn't have done when he bought it, or bought knowing that he had, there was this easement or whatever. The town activated it, it's now a paved road, it cuts through his property. I mean, I don't think it's a typical situation, but...
Your prior decision of this board specifically stated that, you know...
Should stay.
Should stay in common ownership.
Should stay in common ownership, I don't, uh...
Which you could still do estate planning and leave it in a common ownership and have the kids, each have life rights to the house, each house, or whatever, so...
Tenants in common, you know?
Yeah, so...
And that, and that would still allow the financing.
That's, that's the thing. I mean, he certainly would prefer it as the, as separate for the, for the financing.
I don't understand, though, why it has to be separate for financing, like, people build secondary dwellings all the time, and...
I don't think he...
Just because he wants a construction loan, and they won't grant it because there's already a primary dwelling?
I don't think, yeah, I don't think he wants to have them attached, about that. I think he wants to treat the loan as, you know, say, all right, here's my construction loan for my secondary dwelling, not have it attached.
I don't think that's, I don't, but I don't think that's, I don't think that gets us to the level of modifying a variance, you know what I mean? Like, there already is a variance in place, and it's already been addressed. Right?
Yeah, I mean, it seems...
I mean, I feel for the guy that he's having financing problems, but...
It, it seemed, yeah, to me, to, um, to change it to create a separate marketable lot, is...
Although it is weird, though, right? Like, they'd have to, like, cross a road to get to their other part of their yard? It does seem weird.
I mean, essentially, it's gonna be treated as a separate lot.
Yeah, no, I know, I'm just thinking, like, it, it is, it is odd to have one lot and have a, a drivable road go through the middle of it. And to require that to be able to stay in common ownership, I mean, the resale of it for him, I, I mean, I would think would be difficult.
I mean, it'll have its, it has a, it'll have its own separate access off of Coffin, Coffin Road. It's got its own separate access to Monwell. I mean, it's, for all intents and purposes, it's separate.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm not really sure why they were required to be held in common ownership.
I mean...
For this reason, I think. So just so that you didn't have two, two marketable lots.
You didn't create a two marketable undersized lots.
Yeah, but I mean, that's kind of, I, but that, I feel like that's, I feel like that's kind of unfair. Like, the town goes and puts a road through the middle of your lot, and then says, oh, but you can't...
The road was there.
It wasn't, it wasn't usable, though. I mean, it was, it was a paper road, that the chances of it being used, you know, I mean, I, I get it, they bought a lot with a road going through it.
Too bad Michael didn't stay, 'cause he said on it...
The road that went through it, there was one lot.
Hmm?
Yeah, and based on the zoning decision, they knew that it was always gonna be one lot. It wasn't on, but, you know, I don't, I, I just, the analysis I have a problem with. That's why if we were to come, if we were coming forward, I, I don't really agree with the analysis. But given the hardship and the uniqueness, and, well, whether there's a hardship, mostly the uniqueness of the situation, I could maybe see through it.
I mean, I just, I don't think that we're gonna be starting a precedent where this is gonna be popping up all over the place.
Yeah, it's just this, this one road.
I don't know about that, there are a lot of, there are a lot of those. Twenty paper roads running all over the place.
But not...
But that have been, that are gonna be paved, the yard sale, sort of, at Apple's. And I also can't say, like, if I thought, if I, I don't think, I, I don't really know that I think it's a bad precedent to set. Like, if I had a, if I had a house, and, and there was a paper road that hadn't been used in a hundred years, and then all of a sudden the town came and paved it, and, I don't know, I mean...
Well, I think the precedent would be, oh, I know, I can subdivide this where I normally wouldn't because of...
Yeah, because now there's a road running through my yard, and I've sort of lost the ability to use it as my yard. Right, like, what good is it if you've got, like...
But it's, it's not a, you buy the lot, and suddenly, out of the blue, this road is created by the planning board.
Right, I mean, they know it's, right.
There was nothing in the record.
Right, they knew it was there, yeah.
That's right, and just as a point of clarification, I don't think subdivision was ever contemplated for them, that, that's...
Yeah, I realize that, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, 'cause it showed up as the second dwelling. And the planning board flagged and said, hey, wait a second, you've got, you know, your one lot is no longer considered one lot under our, you know, definition of, and one thirty-nine two.
So can I just ask one question? In terms of if this were to go through and go into separate ownership, lot A would not be able to be expanded upon, because lot B is using the ground coverage, their overage of coverage, is that what your analysis basically says?
There's room for some expansion, but not, not, you're giving up some, because the structure on lot, unfortunately, the letters were reversed between the plans. It's portion A on the original thing, and then on the block three or something. But the structure or the catch foundation, the way on lot, the smaller lot is one thousand four hundred and fifty.
Fifty, yep.
And if you were to calculate three percent of thirty-four thousand four hundred forty-four, it doesn't come out, it's something much, it's like one thousand one hundred two, if I remember correctly.
One thousand thirty-three.
Okay, so that difference is being taken away from what would be allowed on the seventy-four thousand square.
That's what I'm saying.
So, yes, there is some room, I think you get two hundred square feet.
But you're saying, I think you said equals four hundred and seventeen...
I might, very late.
So there's, he, he's over four hundred and, yeah, seventeen square feet, and you're saying lot A is under by four hundred and seventeen square feet?
So lot would, lot A would get a maximum of one thousand eight hundred sixteen square feet, which probably is sixteen hundred, so...
Oh, I got it, I, I see, okay. So we just have to make sure that that is explicit in the decision if it's to move forward?
And, and that decision will go in the building form files, so if ever they came to expand, Marcus would see that.
So basically, the, the lot B is built out to its maximum?
Correct.
I mean, they would, you know...
That's just a suggestion, of course.
I think it makes sense, so... So at least there's some encumbrance with, with creating that second one. Okay? How does everybody feel?
I posted, I put my motion out there, based on uniqueness.
And, but including the ground coverage, that, I think that came up after...
You need to amend the motion.
Yeah.
Did I make the motion?
Look.
You seconded, but please be amended.
Were you amended to the ground cover?
amended.
You amended it, any more, what?
To, um, to allow, sorry, you can go ahead, another chairwoman.
To reflect the ground coverage figures that are reflected in the staff report. So lot B is, would be at its maximum, it's actually over the ground coverage, and so would have no further expansion, and lot A would have further expansion of whatever their percentage is, which I think... which I think, getting them to eighteen hundred and six, eighteen, one thousand eight hundred and sixteen square feet. And that house is currently at sixteen hundred, so they would be able to expand two hundred and sixteen square feet on the ground.
Take Lot B matched out.
Yep. So they basically share the ground coverage of the lot minus the road, and, which makes Lot A less, not have as much expansion capabilities as would normally happen with the standard zoning calculation. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
The motion carries.
For the four?
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, can I make a motion to adjourn?